Members of Mr. Wardy, we swear in under special business. Jerry Nizgotsky has given an update on...
You copy?
LaSalle Park.
LaSalle Park or LaSalle Square?
Square, excuse me.
Park.
So I will draw a square here. Who's the invocation is by, do you know his name?
We don't have anything.
Yes, the guy just came in and said, "I'm doing your prayer." I don't know his name. So I will just say, "Thank you for the invocation." He can step up and wing it.
You can't stop an invocation. You've been begging to...
You were gonna say something. Yeah, that's okay. Um, 7510 is continued to March 28. 8710, we need second substitute. And that is favorable personnel finance. Um, 8410...
We need to amend this question. Same thing for 87.
What did you say, Captain?
Amend 84 and 87.
8410 and 8710 amended as it was in the committee of the whole. Under resolution, 1113 is confirming. 1114 is favorable out of CED. 1115 is favorable out of personnel finance. 1116 is continued to...
March 14.
March 14. And 1117 is favorable out of CED. 611 goes to Parks for 31411. What'd I tell you about touching me?
Chaplain Slagel.
Slagel, that's it. And 711, Public Works for 314. Under unfinished business, Bill 311 goes to... March 14th is gonna... He's Reverend Slagel?
No, Chaplain.
It's 314.
Yes. I forgot to ask Phil today from when they had their park meeting on the proposed thing at Wardy Park and the other, you know how that went?
We should've gone.
Okay. Did he talk to you? What's the update for that?
Uh, the update I have is from the park board meeting. I mean, you know, from that law.
Yeah.
And it's, it's almost certain that it will come about. But they've got the company, I can't think of the name right now, that wants to buy an area of Wardy Park. It's, pardon, who's your name? And that needs to be finished. And there's just a little time, but hopefully...
Hopefully, you're out.
Hopefully, it will be done as soon as... Three fields.
Right. For rugby.
Yeah, for rugby.
Which, 'cause I asked them if that could be used for Pop Warner football when it's not being used for rugby.
What's wrong with the location Pop Warner has right now?
Parking's better and everything else is better.
There's just a little space. There's just a little edge or something.
They still be, they play Little League.
They do it over there.
Do they play Little League over there now?
They used to play. Not anymore?
That's where they played. They actually had their game.
My son used to play there years ago.
Intermediate.
That organization never came up with the money.
Okay. So it's not being used anymore?
So the city's gonna try to get it and then they're gonna put baseball fields out in new parks.
But there was something else besides...
Yeah, I had a bad feeling. People talking to me.
Something else.
Well, yeah, rugby's gonna be the primary...
I know. I talked to them some.
Come on, man. I am beating myself, man.
What are you doing?
I thought Ryan...
Hold on, hold on. We got someone. Go ahead.
Dave, I think you had asked, what was the bill on the preemption of local firearms? It's Senate Bill 292.
We should have a resolution.
292, gun in every house.
292.
Bring your gun to work, Dave.
It's not already.
My child just got shot.
I thought you were going to Mexico.
Because of his...
When Thursday.
God, you're putting a stupid gun in his pocket.
I got your email.
Call the fire marshal?
I, why?
You are the fire marshal.
He went home. He's not getting 30 cents an hour on the monitor after...
Okay.
And based on how full the chambers are...
Yeah, 'cause that's gonna be continued.
You got a number phone?
911.
That's continued to the...
No, no.
Let's continue to the...
14.
14.
Seriously, when, when they call for overcrowding, they call 911. It goes and then tell them, "You got an overcrowding complaint. You're concerned." They get ahold of the battalion chief and they go out. That's how we deal with bar at nights. Yeah, they call 911 to put it on the recorder.
Really? Is that how it works? So I just call in and say, "Madison City is overcrowded." And I saw a lot of people up there.
You know who came up with that policy?
You know, um, the call for...
They call 911 because they all got a record where the call came from.
Remember those, um, homes that, um, we told, it's a we told out there.
Lafayette Falls?
Yes, they didn't put a group home.
I talked to LA then today.
Are they gonna put a group home there?
Yeah. And you know what?
Can they?
Yeah.
What rights do the residents have?
Zero under state law.
Well, now, it depends on whether, if it's a group home that's sponsored by...
Well, if it's a development...
Okay. If it, if it's criminals coming back, no. Then we do have...
It's a group home, they're coming from Madison City.
That's developmental.
And the people have no right to say what comes in, they can do...
We, we always used to vote on those.
I thought we did.
State law.
State law changed.
State law has changed.
State law.
But it's, but it's...
So they just bought new homes. I mean, I...
If they fall under that category of developmental...
And so that, they just, you know, we just did a tax abatement last year for, you know, they expanded, uh, that development area. What needs home? What was the name?
Move the resolution.
Which, which by the way, is now in...
Yeah, would that help? That would help. Can we do that? That's a good point. Move it up.
By majority of the council?
By majority, the resolution up and get that out the way. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. Thank you. That'd be good.
Oliver, actually, Oliver has an announcement to make.
Okay, what's your announcement, Oliver?
That, that, um...
He's gonna pull...
That subdivision...
That subdivision is in Sixth District.
Not Five.
It's in, you're, okay. But have you got a call?
Pardon me?
Have you got a call from...
No.
I'll email your name.
Have I got a call?
A call about the home.
It's your problem.
About the home that they're gonna put in that...
Want to fix out those boundaries?
And the residents are very upset.
If I have got a call, if I have anything, I've always referred everybody. I found out today that I was the councilperson, because I've always thought you were the councilperson.
I'll email you her name.
So Henry's been getting all the calls.
No, 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 Dave. Because when they showed me the map, that's enlisted in fifth district, it's enlisted in that deal.
But they're very, um, very upset.
Understandably so.
I know, it's south.
It's southwest.
And so, um, I'll email you.
Dave has a little bit of the over 31. I do too, of course, but...
No, Lee said he didn't.
No, the, uh...
Although on this side of...
There's a little bit on the, on the east side of 31, but there's nothing on the west side.
I thought about...
Except for...
Today, I found out.
Okay. I'll email...
It's nice to know.
Or information.
I've always referred all those people over to...
I thought it was something up to him.
It was, uh, it was, when it was, when that area was annexed...
Yeah.
In Lafayette, I know it was six. I know it was six when it was annexed.
Yeah.
I can remember reading that thing. But then somewhere or other, it transitioned to five without any action by us.
Where's the...
But then the explanation we got from, and it started showing up on Five's maps.
Yeah.
Why would they do that? When we went with the last census?
Well, that would've been 10 years, that's 12 years, or 10 years ago.
Derek, did you hear the...
We had to prove district boundaries. Yes, we did.
I think that's when we took that move.
Police officer killed me.
Because it was a little piece of, you know, here from the six. And because of the population shift, where we had to go and reset the boundaries, because we also took from the first...
Actually, the little, the only little piece I had was Cobb's. It was between, uh...
Did you move it up? I just hit a motion.
It was Calvert, Seuing.
We're gonna have to clear half those people out.
Except how many people out there?
No, go with the others.
Well, they have to be in the hall.
I think we're, we're full.
I'd say we have to.
They have to be on the hallway.
We've never had this before. Hey, when we passed, uh, yes.
We're gonna search them at arms.
Which best, you have it up front.
We have another tribal.
Which may be where you...
We take a, we would take at this point, eight.
Yeah, but I know we took a little piece for the fifth...
There was an officer standing there.
And we took a piece that was in the second.
At the door. Huh? They were putting them first.
But that piece that was in four, that was in five...
By who?
Went into four. Oh, the dispatcher? Not four, three. He said, yeah. Went into three, Calvert, and Ewing.
Down in that little corner.
Down in the lobby.
And from Twickenham to Ironwood.
Wow.
And that, that completed, you got the square that goes, basically, Ewing is dividing.
Yeah, 'cause it used to, that little...
Who's coming up there, buddy?
That council has to do...
I told this, the dispatcher what it was and to contact battalion chief.
Well, I think what's happening, if you look at the seventh district, because you do your district by population.
Seven, seven.
Oh, yeah.
Six districts.
So then you've got, you know, your district has...
According to the census map, six district group. And I could tell when I got the numbers in my district.
They gotta be evenly populated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't they have to realize all the districts?
All the districts.
Yeah, 'cause my, my district's grown.
Yeah. So that's going to be, we have to discuss the district.
It, it came to a prepackaged, Carl came...
But you know, the second one, the latest census, you got the compact?
Based on the right reasons.
Population.
Well, it would make sense and to make sure that it's a big one.
Or selected...
Because there's, I mean, there's new population up there.
That's right.
Yeah. Yes, with that population down there, plus the Rum Village area has grown.
Is it?
Yeah. It was on the new census though.
It showed Rum Village group?
Yeah.
Really?
It was the highest growth.
Really?
Yeah.
It sure was.
Rum Village?
We're gonna ask Larry to come because he gave us the tentative.
I haven't yet. Go look at all the people out there.
We had an increase. So what happened?
No, well, we got there. I just had to...
That's right.
Oh, come on up real quick.
Yeah, okay. You know, Derek, you're such a...
The only criteria, I said, there's neighborhoods, there's natural boundaries, there's other things that have to come in.
What do you attribute that to, councilman?
They wanna be near me. Really, the housing over there's got a nice, maybe it's cheap housing.
We're gonna have to get somebody to, we gotta get all these people out.
And?
And we'll get in?
You were right.
Yeah, 'cause I made one announcement.
You were right.
I don't know if they understand.
Say this was up here and over here. Something?
Yeah, can we make an announcement? Here, Peter. We still need everybody that's, way over capacity.
It's a far has.
Always. Everybody standing, people sitting in the fire. Everybody else has to go outside.
Now, if you go outside, will you be able to...
Yeah.
Right in the hallway.
And then, uh, is it possible to move this up first or that we could get people?
Yeah.
Yes.
From where you're making an announcement? Right here. You can speak and, just speak and this'll pick it up.
Is it on?
Yeah, just yell. Anyone needs to pick it up, just pick it up.
Talk right in.
Just talk right into it. Go ahead, Dave.
It'll pick it up.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now? I can't hear myself.
It's on.
Okay, si están parados, este están pidiendo que se pueden salir para afuera porque no hay suficiente espacio, la capacidad solamente son para 155 personas, so si están parados tienen que salir para fuera, las puertas van a estar abiertas, van a poder escuchar, este porque hay muchas personas, han movido nuestra resolución primero en la agenda, so por favor, si están parados, si pueden salir para fuera, y van a poder escuchar y ahí. Gracias.
Thank you. Are you welcome?
What was the name of that bill?
Uh, Senate Bill 590.
Or no, the, the, the number of the resolution.
1115.
1115, oh, there it is. Okay.
Tell him to sit down.
Yeah, they can stand. Yeah, they can stand single file.
It's not behind. I lost my Greek. People can stand on the back wall.
Single file.
They can stand on the back wall.
Single file.
Perdón. Pueden pararse atrás de la pared, una línea, una línea atrás.
Oh, boy, you didn't know.
Una línea.
I knew I shouldn't have said that.
Una línea. Sí.
Are our speakers off? Just, just, just the back wall. Side wall. Yeah, just the back wall.
There you go.
I don't make the rules, pal. It's simple.
Would you like us to have somebody to interpret this to while we're reading it? Or is that necessary? 'Cause we didn't get a, you had a tab or did this? No. Yeah, we got a couple of... We're almost ready. We just need a translator to help us read that part. You have a copy that you can give them ahead of time?
I don't have a big mind to, uh...
Um, hold on a second.
Over to Roger, I can make one.
Yeah, you can run back and make one. He's gonna make that, um, copy and then, and then you can do that. Thanks.
Ready, buddy?
Yeah.
We're almost ready.
I'll run back, right?
Okay, that's fine.
You ready?
Yes.
I stole my stuff. There we go. The Monday, February 28, 2011, South Bend Common Councils now in session. All rise. To the invocation by Chaplain Slagel.
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for giving us the very privilege of living in a country that gives us the freedom of assembly, the freedom of speech. Lord God, I pray that you give the mayor, the city councilmen and women discernment, wisdom on their duties here. Lord God, I pray for the policemen and firemen and women, the EMTs of this city that, that risk their lives to, to protect and to serve us. Lord God, it's not easy for the families of, of these men and women, and I pray that you give them the peace that, that passes all understanding as their wives and husbands and brothers and sisters and moms and dads go to the streets to protect us all. And Lord God, we just thank you again for living in this country, that we can come here in peaceful assembly, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wardy? They're saying they can't hear out there. We can't believe about it, 'cause we didn't have prior notice. It's a county switch. Oh, okay, no problem. Okay. Okay, Mr. Wardy, we read that roll, please. Mr. Henry Davis. Enter's here. Mr. LaFountain?
Here.
Mrs. Puzella?
Present.
Dr. Varner?
Present.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Present.
Mr. Kursitz?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Dieter?
Present, Mr. Wardy.
Eight present. Thank you. Get the report from the subcommittee on minutes. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 14th meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Dieter, David Varner.
I move that we accept the report from the subcommittee on minutes.
Second. A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Under special business, we have three citizen members who are gonna be sworn into committee. If you are present, step up to the table by Mr. Wardy, please. I'll have to do this one at a time because you've got different posts, or at least only twice. I'll do yours first, Ellen. Just raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Alexandra Soysen.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a citizen member of the Community Relations Committee.
Of a citizen member of the Community Relations Committee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Fitz and, uh, Mr. Clea. Raise your right hand and repeat. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Anthony Fitz.
Aye, Richard Clea.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear...
Yes, do solemnly swear that we support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a citizen member of the Residential Neighborhoods Committee.
Citizen member of the Residential Neighborhoods Committee.
So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations. Derek? We'll send a copy to you. If you wanna shake the council's hand? Derek? Shake hands? Next under special business, Jerry Nizgotsky.
Mr. Clea, I see you again.
Good job, buddy. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Also, under special business, Jerry Nizgotsky will give us an update on LaSalle Square. Hello, Mr. Parrott.
Thank you.
That's the county still.
Jerry Nizgotsky, 2930. What you have before you, and I apologize, it's not, uh, doesn't include 2010 figures. I did not include those, but basically is a spending for, uh, the airport economic development area, which includes LaSalle Square. It includes the area industrial park around, of course, as you know, around the airport. And it also includes, uh, what is basically ignition park in that area. Now, the projected 2010 spending for LaSalle Square was $1,632, as you can see at the bottom. Uh, I apologize, I don't have the updated figures, but basically you could take $1,600 and some thousand, carry it forward, because I think the only spending that was done was for Unity Garden, uh, some stuff they had done and a couple other things. No, no properties were acquired. Uh, they are in the process of still negotiating with Faith Apostolic Church to acquire property for a senior housing project, which we discussed here in the past. Um, but basically, uh, within the square proper, there's nothing that's happened in the last year. Uh, I want to thank Councilman Davis, Henry Davis, Jr. For the last several years, we've been complaining about the sign at the corner of Ardmore and, and Bennetts Drive, and, uh, it's amazing, with his help thankfully, that they found some rule or, or law that can help us get rid of that blighted sign. It's been blighted for years. We've been complaining about it for years, and guess there's a will to do something now. So basically, what we're seeing is that, uh, we're gonna carry forward to 2011, just as we did in 2008 and 2009. And our only concern is that hopefully, uh, the money will remain there, as was promised to us, $2,005,000 initially. Uh, I will say one thing, uh, there is one major hindrance to the development, redevelopment of LaSalle Square, and that is Beacon Heights. Um, I'm not politically correct, never have been, never will be. And we can all, uh, I've been in meetings behind closed doors with leaders of the community, black and white, and they say one thing, then they come out in public, say another. Problem is, Beacon Heights, uh, management presently, that operates at it, places a big hindrance to the redevelopment of LaSalle Square. Um, other than that, we are hoping that as we move forward, that the city can move forward and purchase the two properties left between Ardmore Trail and Bonds Avenue. Uh, and we keep hearing that there are offers on table, but nothing's moving forward.
All right. Thank you, sir. Reports from city offices. Seen, uh, under special business, I'm sorry, still in special business, uh, I have a motion here from our council. Yes. I'm sorry. Where are we at?
Need a motion to hear Bill 1115.
Motion to hear, uh, Bill 1114?
15.
15, 1115, motion to hear, uh, Bill 1115. Second.[1615.02] Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition, thank you. Mr. Vorty.
I read eleven fifteen. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, in opposition to Senate Bill five ninety, currently pending in the Indiana General Assembly, which proposes new regulations on the enforcement of federal immigration laws, checking the citizenship or immigration status of individuals and related matters.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presenter, please?
Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, committee. Yes, this matter came before Personnel and Finance Committee this afternoon, and after holding hearing, the committee voted to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, sir. Presenter.
Yes, my name is Karen White. I'm currently an at-large council member for the South Bend Common Council. I would like to personally thank the council and all of the individuals who are present with us this evening in reference to Bill eleven dash fifteen. Several weeks ago, I had emailed the council members asking them to give me their input regarding the current Senate Bill five ninety, which is currently under discussion in the Indiana General Assembly. As you are well aware, we have collectively worked hard with the city administration to keep a balanced city budget during these tough economic times. Senate Bill five ninety would result in unknown costs to our taxpayers and has the potential to negatively affect growth and development in South Bend and perhaps our entire state. At this time, we would like to present, for your consideration, Resolution eleven fifteen. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, in opposition to Senate Bill five ninety, currently pending in the Indiana General Assembly, which proposes new regulations on the enforcement of federal immigration laws, checking the citizenship of immigration status of individuals and related matters. Whereas on January the twentieth, two thousand and eleven, Senate Bill five ninety was filed by Indiana Senator Mike Delft of Carmel, which proposes to make various changes to state laws concerning the enforcement of federal immigration laws, checking the citizenship of immigration status of individuals, and several other matters, including, but not limited to, requiring that only English be used in public meetings and public documents, requiring the federal government to reimburse the state for causes, and requiring a process to suspend or revoke business licenses who normally, normally implore unauthorized aliens, and whereas, as the following of this resolution, the Indiana State Committee on Pension and Labor and the Indiana State Committee on Appropriations held public hearings on Senate Bill five ninety, where heated debate took place, and whereas, one of the key concerns raised by Eli Lilly and Company, a research-based company founded in eighteen seventy-six in Indianapolis by Colonel Eli Lilly, a U.S. Civil War veteran, who was frustrated by the poorly prepared and ineffective medicines at that time, which have grown into a company with three hundred, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty employees worldwide, and marketed products in one hundred and forty-three countries, states that this anti-immigration and English-only bill would make it difficult to recruit new and educated workers and retain current employees in Indiana communities, who simply will not move to and live in a state that it seems as unwelcoming. And, and Pazella, we will now read the next section of the resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Henry.
Whereas Cummins, Cummins Incorporated, headquartered in Columbus, Indiana, which designs, manufactures, and distributes and services engines and related technologies in one hundred and ninety countries, with over five thousand, two hundred dealers, locations, join Eli Lilly and Company imposing, in imposing Senate Bill five ninety, and whereas, the City of South Bend, like most other communities throughout our state and the nation, are in the midst of trying to attract and grow businesses in very challenging economic times, and whereas, the state of, the state, excuse me, the Indiana State Senator and Representatives should especially take notice when Indiana-based companies, which have global footprints and are among the Indiana, the state's largest employers, raise serious concerns about the potential consequences to their companies and the future liabilities to have robust job creation if Senate Bill five ninety becomes law.
And whereas, in reviewing the four fiscal impact statements prepared by the Indiana Legislative Service Agency of the Office of Fiscal and Management Analysis, based in Indianapolis, each of these reports, under the heading "Explanation of Local Expenditures", include a note that, "This fiscal note does not include a secondary analysis of the potential effects stricter enforcement of unauthorized immigration law may have on local expenditures." And, whereas, the South Bend Common Council and the South Bend City Administration worked and collaborated together to carefully weigh and balance city priorities in order to reduce expenditures of tax dollars funding the General Fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund from two thousand and six through two thousand and ten, which resulted in fifteen point five percent decrease in the General Fund spending totaling ten point nine million, one point six percent decrease in the Parks and Recreation Fund spending totaling one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, while also having interest earnings being reduced by one point eight million for this same period of time.
I'll read my part from here. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council and the South Bend City Administration have further had to grapple with property tax revenues being down twelve point two million dollars and projected COAT and EDIT revenues projected to decrease over the next two years. Whereas, the City of South Bend, with support of its residents and businesses, have put the highest priorities on good fiscal management, which is transparent and responsive, and that is one of the reasons why it is particularly disturbing that our state senators and state representatives may fail in their own due diligence requirements by not even having the potential or projected costs to local governments identified, which would result from the passage of Senate Bill five ninety.
Now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana believes that Indiana State Senators and State Representatives should continue indefinitely Bill five ninety, in light of the potential negative effects which such legislation may have on job creation, business expansion, and attraction, the negative perception it may have on all Indiana communities if enacted, and pending judicial challenges in other jurisdictions on similar legislation, which are proving very costly to their taxpayers. Section two, the Common Council further believes that in light of the Hispanic population being the fastest growing segment of the South Bend community, as reported in the latest U.S. Census data, and the unknown costs which may result to our police department, that enact of Senate Bill five ninety may be a reckless disregard of due diligence requirements by the state-elected officials for their failure to even consider a cost-benefit analysis of enforcement of such a law by local governments. Section three, the Common Council requests the city clerk to send a copy of this resolution to each of the duly-elected state senators and state representatives representing the City of South Bend, as well as to the chief sponsors of Senate Bill five ninety, Senator Mike Delft, and the presiding offices of the Indiana Senate and the Indiana House of Representatives. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approved by the mayor. At this time, we will now have this translated by.
Can we please open the doors so our folks out there can hear what we're going to say in Spanish, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Herman.
Can we open the door so we can get this moving?
It's up to the fire marshal to.
Council President, we have.
Unfortunately, we were not prepared for this large, large audience. We are very grateful for the number of individuals that are here, but we do have certain guidelines and processes that we must adhere to, and so that what you're seeing now is based on the number of individuals that can actually come into the chambers, as well as the number of individuals that can be in the hallway. So it's not, it's based on safety. It's not in disrespect to any individuals that are here.
Okay, I get, can you give me a point of order for translation for the resolution? Well, give the sponsor of the bill. Do you want this to be, to be translated? It's your...
Yes.
I think it's important.
Okay, go ahead and proceed then.
Thank you. Una resolución del Concilio Común de la Ciudad de South Bend, Indiana, que se opone a la propuesta de ley del Senado cinco noventa, que ahorita está pendiente en la Asamblea General de Indiana, que propone nuevas regulaciones en forzar leyes de inmigración federales, revisando la ciudadanía o estatus migratorio de individuos y otros asuntos que tienen que ver con este asunto. ¿Cómo es? El día veinte de enero del dos mil once, la propuesta de ley del Senado cinco noventa se había entregado por el senador de Indiana Mike Delft de Carmel, que propone hacer varios cambios a las leyes estatales que tiene que ver sobre enforzando las leyes de inmigración federales, revisando la ciudadanía o estatus migratorio de individuos y varios otros asuntos que incluye, pero no están limitados a requerir que solamente inglés se use en citas juntas públicos y documentos públicos, que requiere que el gobierno federal reembolse el estado por los gastos, y que requiere un proceso para suspender o revocar la licencia de negocio para estas personas que sabiendo lo que están haciendo emplean a extranjeros sin autorización. ¿Y cómo es? Cuando se entrega esta resolución, el comité del Senado de Indiana de pensiones y labor y el comité del Senado de Indiana en apropiaciones tuvo audencias públicos en la propuesta de ley del Senado cinco noventa, donde hubo debate que tuvo lugar, y ¿cómo es? Uno de las mayores preocupaciones que se mencionó por la compañía Eli Lilly, una compañía que está basado en el mil ochocientos setenta y seis en Indianapolis, por el coronel Eli Lilly, un veterano de la guerra civil de Estados Unidos, que era frustrado por las medicinas que no tenían efectividad y que estaban preparadamente muy mal en ese tiempo, y que creció una compañía con más de treinta y ocho mil, trescientos cincuenta empleados por todo el mundo, y productos en ciento cuarenta y tres países dijeron que esta legislación anti-migratorio y de solamente usar inglés lo va a ser difícil para reclutar trabajadores educados y nuevos, y para poder mantener empleados que están trabajando ahora en nuestras comunidades de Indiana, que simplemente se van a mover o no van a vivir en un estado que se ve que no da la bienvenida. ¿Y cómo es? La compañía Cummins, que está basado en Columbus, Indiana, que diseña, hace, distribuye, y hace servicios para motores y tecnología relacionado con ello en ciento noventa países, con más de cinco mil, doscientos lugares local, que acompañaron a Eli Lilly, la compañía, en oponiendo a la propuesta de ley cinco noventa del Senado. ¿Y cómo es? La Ciudad de South Bend, como otras comunidades por todo el estado y todo el país, están tratando de atraer y crecer negocios en estos tiempos de economía difíciles. ¿Y cómo es? Los senadores y representantes del Estado de Indiana, que especialmente toman noticia cuando compañías que están basadas aquí en Indiana, que tienen huellas globales, y que son además de los empleadores más grandes del estado, que cuando ellos tienen preocupaciones de las consecuencias que podrían pasar a sus compañías, y la habilidad futura para tener una creación de trabajo bueno, si es que la propuesta de ley del Senado cinco noventa se hace ley, ¿y cómo es? En revisando cuatro declaraciones de impacto fiscales que fueron preparados por la Agencia de Servicios Legislativos de Indiana, de la Oficina del Fiscal y Análisis de Manejo, basado en Indianapolis, cada uno de estos reportes bajo el título Explicación de Gastos Locales incluían una nota que decía, "Esta nota fiscal no incluye una análisis secundaria de los efectos potenciales que podrían resultar de enforzar estrictamente la ley de inmigración sin autorización que podría tener en los gastos locales." ¿Y cómo es? El Concilio Común de South Bend y la administración de la Ciudad de South Bend ha trabajado juntos para tomar en cuenta con mucho cuidado la prioridad de la ciudad, para poder reducir los gastos de los impuestos que se ponen en el Fondo General y el Fondo del Parque y Recreación desde el dos mil seis hasta el dos mil diez, que resultó en quince punto cinco por ciento que se rebajó en el Fondo General, gastándose diez punto nueve millones de dólares, y rebajó uno punto seis por ciento en el Fondo de Recreación y Parques, que se gastó un total de ciento ochenta mil, mientras que los que se ganaba en interés fueron reducidos por uno punto ocho millones de dólares por el mismo tiempo de, durante ese mismo periodo de tiempo. ¿Cómo es? El Concilio Común de South Bend, la administración de la Ciudad de South Bend, que ha tenido que trabajar con el hecho que los impuestos de la propiedad están bajos por doce punto dos millones, y proyectan que el COIT y EBIT, la ganancia que se proyecta, que va a rebajar más en los próximos dos años, ¿cómo es? La Ciudad de South Bend, con el apoyo de sus residentes y negocios, han puesto a una prioridad alta que manejar la responsabilidad fiscal, que sea transparente y responsivo, y que una de esas razones que es particularmente que los molesta nuestros senadores del estado y representantes del estado, que ellos podrían fallar, que en sus requerimientos de diligencia debida, que ni hayan visto cuáles son los gastos que pueden proyectar, o que son potenciales, a los gobiernos locales identificado que resultaron como si pasan la ley del Senado cinco noventa. Ahora, entonces, que sea resuelto por el Concilio Común de la Ciudad de South Bend de Indiana, lo siguiente. Sección uno, el Concilio Común de la Ciudad de South Bend de Indiana cree que los senadores del Estado de Indiana y los representantes del estado deberían continuar sin definición la ley cinco, la propuesta de ley cinco noventa, dado el hecho de los efectos negativos potenciales que tal ley podría tener en la creación de trabajo, expansión de negocio, y atracción de negocio, la percepción negativa que podía tener en todas las comunidades de Indiana, si es que pasa, y el pleito judicial que todavía está pendiente en otros, in otros lugares, por leyes similares, que puede comprobar ser muy gastoso para los que pagan sus impuestos aquí. Sección dos, el Concilio Común además cree que dado el hecho que la población hispana, que es el segmento que está creciendo más en nuestra comunidad de South Bend, como se ha reportado en los datos del Census del Estados Unidos recientes, y que no se sabe los gastos que pueden resultar en nuestro departamento de la policía, si pasan esta propuesta de ley del Senado cinco noventa, que puede ser un descuidado de los requerimientos de diligencia debida por nuestros oficiales elegidos del estado, por su falla de tomar en cuenta un análisis de los gastos y los beneficios de enforzar tal ley por gobiernos locales. Sección tres, el Concilio Común le pide a la Secretaría de la Ciudad que mande una copia de esta resolución a cada uno de los senadores del estado elegido, y los representantes del estado que representan la Ciudad de South Bend, y también al que apoya la propuesta de ley del cinco noventa del Senado, al senador Mike Delft, y todos los oficiales del Senado de Indiana y la Casa de Representantes de Indiana. Sección cuatro, esta resolución estará en efecto y fuerza total desde y después de la adopción del Concilio Común, y que lo apruebe el alcalde.
Sir, could I, we just need your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. It's Rodolfo, R-O-D-O-L-F-O, Monterrosa, M-O-N-T-E-R-R-O-S-A, residing in twenty-three, twenty-three, two Amber Valley Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember White, that's the end of your presentation?
Yes, Councilmember President, Dieter, that is the conclusion of our presentation, and we ask for your full consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? And this will be individually and then as a group?
Yes, I am Pastor Don Gaston from Emmanuel Church. Also, I am a member of TAP, and I have concerns concerning this bill of five ninety, for one major, for various major reasons. But let me emphasize this one reason at this. This issue hearkens, this issue hearkens, take us back to the days of when fugitive slaves had to carry proof that they were not fugitive, that they were free people. I myself have been many times mistaken and asked, was I Haitian, or was I from somewhere else? But I'm an American citizen, born here and raised in America. If I am in a crisis, in a situation where I need law enforcement officers to come to my aid, I don't need to have to search for documentation to prove the fact that I am an American citizen. What I need is them to help me out, not to challenge my citizenship. My brothers and sisters, they don't need their citizenship challenged in situations. They need the law enforcement to help them, not to challenge them, nor do I need them to challenge me, because I may look Haitian. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jesus Rivera, and I am from St. Adelbert Parish and also with TAP, Transforming Action Through Power, and I want to applaud Karen White for being the champion of this resolution, and it sends...
May we read her address, please?
Sure. It's 1632 West Indiana, South Bend, Indiana, 46614.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, it sends a strong message, a vital message, to ensuring that legal immigrants, their families and their employers feel welcomed and allowed to integrate into our society without the fear of being labeled simply because of the color of their skin, the accent that they speak, or the way that they're dressed. Now, this resolution will send a sign to our local businesses, business leaders and their employers that we will not allow a politician looking at easy points in the media to hurt legitimate businesses serving and serviced by immigrant laborers. SB 590 will drive jobs and investment to other states, and your resolution today will give businesses hope that they can come to South Bend and feel welcome to do business here.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jose from Young Adams High School and member of TAP. An opportunity through this resolution needs to send a message to future students...
Excuse me, we need your address, sir.
2634 Gray Street, 46619.
Thank you.
My name is Jose from Young Adams High School and member of TAP. An opportunity through this resolution is to send a message to future students of our surrounding universities that SB 590 does not reflect the values of South Bend. Students from all nations and creeds are welcome here to advance their higher education.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Juan Escareño. My address is 924 Sherman Avenue. I'm the Executive Director of Transforming Action Through Power, or TAP for short. I just want to really quick give acknowledgement to the hundreds of people who are outside in our...
Okay, thank you. They can sit back down. Thank you.
I just want to give acknowledgement to the hundreds of people who are outside and who couldn't come in, because they are here, because they are being isolated and accused simply because of the way they look. And I applaud you as a city councilor of South Bend for standing up to this archaic law that takes us back to the pre-Civil War days. I also want to applaud you for being the first here in the state of Indiana for doing this. And I would like to end by saying that this is just the tip of the iceberg of people who are looking for Indiana, for home, for work, for a place to raise their families. If you look at Arizona, people have left their businesses, their homes and their schools, not because they're undocumented, but because they're brown, because they're Mexican-Americans, and because they do not want to be asked for their passport or their driver's license or their country of origin, like myself. Many years ago, in another state, in another time, I myself was asked for my passport. I was born and raised in the state of Illinois, and I stood in front of a police officer who wanted to know what country I was from. What was I doing here? Do I have permission to be in the state of Illinois? And I have never in my life needed a passport, and yet here I was being asked where I am from. Yes, I may slur my speech, I may talk a little slang, but I am just as American as anybody else. And so this law, if it becomes law, will be an attack on people like myself who are born and raised here in this country. And we will be asked, where are we from? And do you have papers? And I don't have papers because I don't need them, nor should I ever have to need to show them. And thank you very much, and I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else in favor? Anyone in opposition?
My name is Dustin Saunders, 119 Laporte Avenue. I'm speaking in favor. I'd like to thank Councilman White for doing this. I find it completely and utterly wrong for a politician to put a law forth like this. This is bigoted. It is wrong. When I look out here, I see nothing but people. I don't see Hispanic people. I don't see white people, black people. I see people. These are our community. These are the people that we live with, our neighbors, our friends. So I really hope you guys take part in this and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Can we go down to opposition? Counsel, may I have a recommendation? Move for adoption?
Second.
Mr. Vorty, if you want something to say?
Before we act on this, I want to clarify one thing, and the Reverend, I think, made a point that I think we have to... I don't believe that there's anything in that legislation that suggests that a police officer would deny a service that was needed as part of whatever investigation took place. You don't have to answer that, but it's not there. And so when you say that sort of thing, it implies that it doesn't exist. You will receive the services any citizen would receive.
Mr. Vorty, Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain?
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello?
Aye.
Dr. Werner?
As a financial consideration, as described, aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Cursid?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
The vote is eight ayes. All right, thank you. Order, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I would like to add that copies of today's conversation and discussion will be available on the website. Is that correct? And also, I think that we will have a videotape as well. We think those who did come, and we will continue with the business that is at hand.
Okay. Do I have a motion to take a five-minute recess while this place empties out? Some move?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
On opposition?
That's the debate.
Oh, yeah.
They used to have it listed on the back wall.
It was right above the entrance to the...
It's right there.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, there's it, yeah.
What is it?
Thirty-five.
It's 186, I believe. See, that should be placed, you can see it.
A bit more prominent, right?
Yeah, there is one outside, isn't there?
But once the door's open, you don't see it.
It's 155.
I said, as a financial consideration, sure, but all this other stuff, I mean, that's what's going to happen. It's going to get morphed into the normal Arizona rhetoric, and that's not what it was. In fact, can I send a cover letter along with the deal which says it?
A dissenting opinion?
No, it's not dissenting. I'm agreeing with that part that was factual.
Yeah.
That's what makes him concerned, but the gentleman that said that I don't need police to provide any service, that's not right. No one doesn't say that. That's a starkly representation, because I think any police officer would take care of the police problem first and then say, by the way, I'm obligated... Which is the way it should be. I can't do anything. Either way, I think they're going to serve their purpose, and I think that's very unfair.
Okay, are we ready? Where's the rest of our council members? South Bend Common Council is now in session. Can I have a motion to report into the Committee of the Whole? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition?
Motion to rise and report.
Want to just stand right here?
Just stand right here. I'm good. Where's your gravel?
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting for the council systems of committee. Proposed ordinance are read by title only by City Clerk John Vorty. Reports are then verbally given by the chairperson of the council's standing committees, in which the proposed ordinance was sent for advisory review and recommendation. The proposed ordinance is the only ordinance to report from a staff member of every plan will be given. Mr. Vorty, could you please read...
Can I have a motion to...
Okay, go ahead.
Move 7510 to March 28.
Second.
You have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Someone ready this real quick?
Yes, good.
Why is this bill continuing to be moved on, moved on, moved on?
There was a memorandum given to the entire council...
I'm ready.
And there are many other jurisdictions. We want to make sure that we are addressing everything.
Why won't we just continue indefinitely until we get the proper research finished?
We'll be ready. We have continuing meetings with the city administration.
Okay, I'll just...
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is carried. Now, Mr. Vorty, we now have Bill, number, second reading for Bill 8710.
Public hearing on a bill of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, mending the 2010 salary ordinance to authorize new positions, titles, and setting the maximum salaries to be paid to certain non-bargaining employees. I have a motion to hear the second substitute version of it.
Second.
So move. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, it's carried. Thank you. You want the committee report?
This matter came before the Personnel and Finance Committee this afternoon. After a holding public hearing, the committee voted to send this to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Now, committee report, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Steve Licky, Mayor of the City of South Bend, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. As you know, the salary ordinance has had a long path to come to this point. When we first proposed the 2011 salary ordinance, council asked that we not provide that general increase, and we discovered that we actually had room within the 2010, the existing 2010 salary ordinance, to be able to provide a modest increase to non-bargaining officials. At the time that we had introduced that bill, though, there were certain positions that we felt warranted a larger increase than the standard across-the-board increase for other positions, because they had taken on additional duties, because of consolidation of departments, because of reorganization, or because of comparison with other positions either within the city or in the private sector. So we brought back an ordinance that listed 14 positions asking for special consideration of those positions. After further discussion with council members, we have winnowed that down to one, two, three positions plus an additional per-hour cost for certain water technicians, and believe that this allows us to meet some of our restructuring goals, allows us to create a couple of new positions that are needed, and then we will administratively deal with some of those other positions, but may come back in a couple of months if need be on a couple of the positions that have dropped out of the bill. So what we're asking tonight is to create one new position for police, a crime lab firearms examiner. This would be a civilian position. There is a sworn officer who would like to retire from the force and would certainly be more than qualified for this position, which would then open up a position for an additional sworn officer with the police department. Second position is in the Department of Public Works, Director of CSO Project Management. This is Jack Dillon's position, and we have asked him to focus on moving forward our long-term control plan for combined sewer overflows and to work on getting the consent decree finalized with the Department of Justice and EPA. So this is a new position. It is at the same salary that he is currently receiving, so there's no raise for this. But by creating this new position, it allows us then to promote Al Greek, who is taking on other responsibilities that Jack had had. We will eliminate Al's old position, so this is not an increase in position, but just a change of organization in the Department of Public Works. And then in the Parks Department, we are asking for an increase, about a three-and-a-half percent increase for the zoo veterinarian. As you are aware, we've had trouble keeping people in the vet position at the zoo, and we believe that this increase hopefully will help us to hire someone and to keep that person in the position for a longer period of time. That position is currently vacant. And then finally, in Water Works, we have three individuals, water technicians, who monitor flow distribution during off-duty hours. We are asking to reinstate a 30 cent per hour premium for those three people to compensate them for the off-duty time that they spend monitoring the water system. We think that this is a bargain for us. We used to have this in the salary ordinance, and to be honest, I'm not sure why it dropped out, but we'd like to reinstate that. So again, we've simplified our request. We ask for your favorable consideration for these four changes so that we can move forward with some restructuring. Thank you.
Right now, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none. Was there anybody from the public who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? None. We would like to have, what's the council's pleasure, move for favor?
We have a comment.
Sure.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Vice President Oliver Davis. We, and actually, I didn't participate in this particular subcommittee, hearing on this particular bill today, and I wasn't, you know, happy with coming back to the council after many times and many attempts of what was going on with it. And I just have like a few concerns, and the reason why I'm going to state my concerns is that during negotiations last summer, we had the opportunity to sit with some other city employees, probably the aggregate population of employees, and discovered that many of them were willing to take, or not take a raise nor a pay cut, but with the understanding that the next two years that they will have an increase of 2%. But because of our financial situation here locally, we raised taxes to make sure we maintain city services and some other things that we wanted to make sure that were there in place within our neighborhoods, such as parks. And so, and because of those things, I actually voted against the budget because I didn't want to be here again saying, oh, well, it's okay to give a few people the raises or give these few people more money or create new positions. So I'm not in favor of this by no stretch of the imagination because of those things. We were working together to improve city services or keep them at a maintenance at a level of decency, and now we're sort of shifting our ideals. And I'm not against those who are acquiring these positions. I wish them well. I think it's a great deal. However, I think that it's bad timing like it was before. If we're going to raise taxes to keep city services, then that's what we need to focus in on, and then maybe the next year we can go ahead with the new salaries or the increases. It's just really difficult to go back to some of the union people, FOP, the firefighters union, as well as Teamsters, and say, hey, those guys get their raises, but it's kind of difficult to say, well, you shouldn't have got yours, and you should have negotiated better, or you should have bargained better. So I think when we do these things, we need to go straight across the board with them just to keep it fair. So I'm not in support of this bill.
A move for favorable recommendation.
Second. A move in the second. Would there need to be any time to have any response from the person, or would you go with the vote?
Go with the vote.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose?
Aye.
Okay, it is carried. I would like to now ask for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Rise and report to full council.
Some move. Thank you. I didn't need to rise, I just needed to adjourn it. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's carried. Okay, now go. You can do that. Full council is now in session. Mr. Vorty, third reading of eighty-four ten. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing two and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, certain land in center township contiguous therewith. Council manic district five, Thomas W. and Jane M. Henry. Six one one seven five Miami Road, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one four.
Move that Bill eighty-four ten be amended, as it was in the committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor.
Aye.
Those in opposition. Thank you. We have a...
Move for the passage of eighty-four ten is amended.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Vorty. Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kursit.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dieter.
Aye.
President Dieter, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vorty. Eight. Eighty-seven ten, please. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the 2010 salary ordinance to authorize new positions, titles, and setting the maximum salaries to be paid to certain non-bargaining employees.
Move that amended Bill eighty-seven ten be amended as it was in the committee of the whole.
Second. Motion in the second.
Move that second amended eighty-seven...
All in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, thank you, go ahead.
Move that second amended eighty-seven ten be passed.
Second.
Mr. Vorty. Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kursit.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay. Proceed to resolutions, eleven thirteen, please. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-eight forty-nine Shower Lux Drive, to be an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Gear LLC. Thank you. Need your name and address and a very short synopsis of your project, sir.
Stan Blankey, manager of South Bend Gear LLC. We reside at forty-seven oh one Nymphs Parkway, South Bend, four six six two eight. This project consists of purchasing various pieces of equipment that will total fifteen million, six hundred thousand dollars. We will add twelve new employees in the first phase of this project by the end of two thousand and eleven, and added additional fourteen employees to bring the total head count to twenty-six employees by the end of two thousand and twelve. We have started construction on the building, and the first phase is underway, and we will start to locate equipment in the August timeframe. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven thirteen? In opposition? Council of recommendation, please.
Move for the adoption of eleven thirteen.
Second, Mr. Vorty. Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kursit.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Eleven fourteen. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as fifty-one oh two Dillon Drive, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Global Parts Network LLC. Thank you. Committee report.
Yes, the bill number eleven fourteen came before the Community Economic Development Subcommittee, and we sent this particular bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Crowley. I reside at seventy-six, seventy-three sixteen Sterlingshire Court in a village of Bull Valley, Illinois. We're proposing to bring a factory here that manufactures brake shoes, and a distribution facility that will manufacture distributed brake shoes for the heavy-duty truck parts industry. The project will require multiple pieces of equipment, including presses, washers, blasters, paint line, packaging machines, forklifts, a regular manufacturing facility, computer hardware, and some other equipment. We plan to lease the building from Huron Holiday Properties. Estimated the project will have about two million dollars' worth of equipment involved, and we estimate we need a tax abatement of about ninety thousand dollars for a five-year period. It will create twenty-two jobs this year, and thirty jobs, maybe a year and a half out, for a total of thirty jobs. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven fourteen?
I will keep it brief. Bill Nolan, thirteen twenty-six Garland Road, South Bend, Indiana. Just, I serve on the board of directors and have asked that they consider South Bend for this over Illinois and Kentucky, and would ask for a favorable procedure here to help encourage them to locate here, as opposed to those other locations.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone in opposition? Council recommendation, please.
Move for the adoption of eleven fourteen. Second.
Mr. Vorty. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Kursit.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Welcome to the first district. Can I have a motion to continue eleven sixteen to March fourteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Those in opposition. Mr. Vorty, eleven seventeen, please. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving an order of the Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission approving certain declaratory resolution and an amendment to the West Washington Chapin Development Area Development Plan adopted by the South Bend Redevelopment Commission. Thank you. Committee report.
David Reilis, Economic Development.
Committee report.
Oh, sorry.
CED committee report.
I know, man, I know. The Community Economic Development Subcommittee met this afternoon, we sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David Reilis, Economic Development Department, twelfth floor of this building. This is a resolution approving a resolution by the Redevelopment Commission approved on January twenty-first, and the Area Plan Commission approved on February fifteenth, which begins the process of adding two parcels to the Washington, West Washington Chapin Development Area. These parcels are on the northwest corner of Washington and Taylor Streets, directly across the street from Tropicana New Place Restaurant. Both properties have one-story commercial buildings on them, and are vacant and in states of disrepair. The acquisition and demolition of these two properties will allow the preparation of these lots for infill housing, or for a possible house move onto them. Your approval of this resolution is requested to allow a public hearing and confirming resolution before the Redevelopment Commission the end of this coming month.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of eleven seventeen? And in opposition? Seeing none, council of recommendation? Move for the adoption of eleven seventeen.
Second.
Mr. Kursit.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mr. LaFountain.
Aye.
Mrs. Pizzello.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. First reading of six eleven, please. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating one million, five hundred thousand dollars from the state grant fund, number two ten, as the operating endowment for the Ray and Joan Crock Center.
Move this to send to the Community and Economic Development.
Somebody reading this, really quick. Council Attorney Cassie, real quick. This particular bill, six eleven, is for, obviously, the Crock Center. The Crock Center, before it resulted in allowing to go through, there was some information that they were sharing with us, about eighteen percent on minority contractors. Can we make sure that this report is given when they show up here for the first reading? I mean, second reading.
You want it updated?
Yeah, I want to update the record of what's going on.
We'll bring that to their attention.
Okay, thank you.
The recommendation was to the parks.
Parks, right, that six eleven be sent to the Parks and Recreation Committee, be sent for second, third reading, and public hearing on three fourteen. Subject to the report.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? I second it, me.
Aye.
Let's do that again. All in favor?
Aye.
Those in opposition? Thank you. Seven eleven. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating the sum of two million dollars from the Major Moves Fund, number four twelve, and the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from the Sewage Works Capital Fund, number six forty-two, for total appropriation of two million, four hundred thousand dollars, for the purpose of infrastructure construction at the Triangle Property Project site.
I move that seven eleven have both be heard on three fourteen, second reading, third reading, and public hearing, and be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, thank you. Can I get a recommendation for Bill three eleven?
I suggest we send on three fourteen, Bill three eleven, to the Zoning and Annexation Committee for second, third reading, and public hearing.
Second.
On March fourteen.
Three fourteen.
Very good, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any new business before the council?
Talk about unfinished business as well, I'm sorry, I keep trying to chime in over here, but you can't see me. Really quick, you know, I, we spoke and we got, obviously, information from, written by council attorney, but signed by council president, about the ad hoc committee for vacant abandoned foreclosed properties. And so what I'm going to do, and I'm just announcing this right now, through the subcommittee that I'm part of, we're going to start working on some of those issues through the Community Relations Subcommittee, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Karen White to join the committees, or we can do dual committees, and work with this particular ordinance, to see what we can do about coming up with an actual solution with the vacant abandoned and foreclosed homes here in South Bend.
Okay. Any new business before this council? Seeing none, privilege of the floor, if you want to talk to the council this time about something we didn't talk about, you need to swipe to that microphone, you have three minutes, we need your name and address.
Dustin Saunders, one nineteen Laporte Avenue. Got a couple issues to bring forth. First is, I brought this up at the W N I T event that they had over there. The roundabout that is going to go in over on the south side, absolute complete waste of TIF dollars. Three and a half million dollars to put in a roundabout that's not needed, and make businesses